Jake, are you ready to record?
Ready.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're going to start our meeting. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 Town and Monroe Planning Board Regular Meeting. Noreen, would you please do roll call?
Johansson.
Here.
Jeff Johansson.
Hi.
Ache.
Here.
Nick Napoli.
Here.
Dylan Penn is absent. Robert Gorstak.
Here.
He'll be covering for Dylan Penn. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to point out the fire exits. There are two in front of me and behind the audience. Another, the main entryway into the building. And then there's another out to my right, out into a patio. With that, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
But the minutes reflect that Bob is in for Dylan. Okay, did you mention that earlier? Okay. Well.
Sorry, my head is very congested.
That's okay. All right. First off, item on the agenda is Summercrest LLC. This is a public hearing. The applicant will come up.
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan DeJoy from the law firm, Catanha, Mann &amp; Ryder for the applicant, Summercrest.
I have a thumb drive.
I did. Can I give that to you now?
Yes.
Sure.
So this has video.
Timothy Metz, the contractor for the project. When you're ready, when you're ready, let me know. The first one you'll see says, I believe it says movie on it. Okay.
This is what's coming.
Yeah.
So there are a variety of images. Do you want all the images? Do you want me to circulate through them?
It's gonna, no. If you don't mind, let me just look at that real quick. I shouldn't know.
Oh, this final?
Yeah. What we did, had a drone presentation prepared for this board. We figured since we were not able to get you prior to this public hearing to the property, we are bringing the property to you. So if you can play that, please. And there is volume to that, too. But hearing check. What you're looking at right now is actual aerial view around the property. The property connects to 45 acres that's owned by the Town of Monroe between Mine Road and Lakes Road and backs up to the 89 acres or so that the school district owns behind the garage that goes out to Rye Hill. All of this connects to about 116 acres of land in that one area. And that's one of the preferences for preserving the area the way it is with the property and what I've done with the historical. So this is going up the driveway into the property.
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan DeJoy from the law firm, Catanha, Mann &amp; Ryder for the applicant, Summercrest.
I have a thumb drive.
I did. Can I give that to you now?
Yes.
Sure.
Timothy Metz, the contractor for the project. When you're ready, when you're ready, let me know. The first one you'll see says, I believe it says movie on it.
This is what's coming.
Yeah.
So there are a variety of images. Do you want all the images? Do you want me to circulate through them?
It's gonna, no. If you don't mind, let me just look at that real quick. I shouldn't know.
Oh, this final?
What we did, had a drone presentation prepared for this board. We figured since we were not able to get you prior to this public hearing to the property, we are bringing the property to you. So if you can play that, please. And there is volume to that, too. But hearing check. Oh, here, here. What you're looking at right now is actual aerial view around the property. The property connects to 45 acres that's owned by the Town of Monroe between Mine Road and Lakes Road and backs up to the 89 acres or so that the school district owns behind the garage that goes out to Rye Hill. All of this connects to about 116 acres of land in that one area. And that's one of the preferences for preserving the area the way it is with the property and what I've done with the historical. So this is going up the driveway into the property. That's the in-ground pool that's currently there to be rehabbed. That red roof is the old recreational known as 45 Pinecrest. The lake can use some work.
You say the pool is currently being rehabbed?
Currently being re- Now we're flying up towards the 45 acres that's owned by the Town of Monroe currently. Distance here's garage. That's the lake. But we're out towards, we see a row of white in the far distance, that's KJ.
My organization and myself would like to thank Town Historian Mr. Nelson for his timeless service to this town, discovering history and helping preserve it for the last 42 years. On October 4th, 2022, the Town of Monroe Historian designated Pinecrest Bungalow Colony as an historical property in order to preserve the history and environment. We want to thank the Town of Monroe Historian, Mr. Nelson. He has always been there for our town.
Nicely done. Thank you. There are some other-
Yes. Next you're going to see is one that I believe says Pinecrest Survey. If you don't mind, I want to get up for this one to point out some stuff.
It's very important to understand what's going on here. We're not just talking about a piece of land that we own. I'm asking you to preserve, give us some permission to fix this property. We're talking about the land that we own around it as well. The lake is back here that you saw in the back end. We purchased this front lot with the box in from the Belmonte's prior to closing on the back lot. We also up here, where you see the two boxes, one behind the other and a brook, we actually purchased those as well. So our possession is everything around here, except for this one lot here and the lot over here owned by Mr. Fisher. So you're going to understand the importance of us pushing this issue with you to get these buildings fixed up, which is the most important thing. None of the wooded area, none of that stuff is being touched. We had a tree on the house. It's off. Dead trees falling. We're getting rid of them. But this gives you a great overview of what's there. This is 127 Lakes Road. We can actually come in the back there and get to this property. We got a common road here, but the reason for buying the Belmonte was to eliminate some easement issues. We did try to buy Scott Fisher out, but we couldn't come to an agreement on pricing at the time. So that way we would own everything. I'm glad to say gas is in and up and running on the property. Cable's in, up and running on the property. The cable, the brand-new lines that were put in by Orange and Rockland, because with Orange and Rockland, right in here is where the wires are going through the trees. So we had to pull them out because even the last storm, not the last storm, before that, they were there because two trees at the same time fell on both sides of the transformer. So they wanted this done. And a year ago, we started talking about it. Three months ago, four months ago, they put the telephone poles in, the lines are there. Ground is closed up. All the electrical is in and new transformers will be in as soon as the electrician prepares, finishes his preparation work for the property. Otherwise, the property is ready to go. And that's why we came to you guys so early to get the COA, so we can jump on these buildings, get them enclosed at minimum before the snow comes. Then we deal with whatever else has to be done on the process. This is not the end of the road, as far as I'm concerned. And I've said that to you from day one. This isn't the end of the road. So that is what this property is. Now you have some pictures, which I want the public and everybody to see, the exact intent of what we're doing. So if we can go to number 33, it says Pinecrest.
Just a quick, because I have a couple of questions. So you don't, you own this piece here? If you look where my cursor is?
We don't own the box in area.
You don't own this? You don't own this?
Correct. But we own this here.
Okay. And do you own this one here?
And we own both, both lots.
Okay. But over here, you don't own these two?
No, we don't, no.
Okay. But this lot and this lot-
That lot we own?
My question is, are they part of the application?
Yes. This, this triangle kind of with the box, that's 15.2 on the application? And the back one is 12, what's it, 3312 is the back one.
This one here?
No. That's, this is separate. This has nothing to do with the-
This isn't, this isn't part of the application?
It is not, because it's not part of the historical.
But these two? Okay. I just want to be clear for the record. And then quickly, what is this area in here? Is that wetland?
That's, yeah.
Or is that something else?
That's 15, this here is all 15 point, this is, this triangle here.
I meant the red hatch area.
Yeah, that's all on 15.2. That's wetlands on the front end.
That is wetland. Okay.
And nothing's getting near the wet, we're about 500 feet back from the wetlands on that particular location.
Okay. So this is showing up as Town of Monroe, Town of Monroe, Town of Monroe?
That's the, that's the 45 acres that I was been speaking about on the other side of our property line. They brought that from all of Orange?
Not the one they acquired recently or not too long ago?
About $3 million they paid for it.
Okay.
$3.5 million, somewhere in there.
I don't know what they, I just remember there was one that they had picked up.
Yeah, that's it. Because this side of the property goes out to Lakes Road. The back side goes out to Mine Road, but it butts up against the garage property, which goes out to Rye Hill.
That's all mine? Was that all mine? Okay.
Yeah, all of mine, I think it was called.
Okay. All right. All right. So let me, anybody have any questions about this map yet or the presentation before we go on to the next set of photos?
Just, just a quick question. So you mentioned that you had attempted but didn't come to terms, I believe with the other property in the front.
With Scott Fisher.
Scott, sorry, Scott Fisher. So the road access is both on your property and Mr. Fisher's property?
This is a given common way by, by, by-
By easement?
By easement.
And that, so that easement existed? I assume it was transferred to you when you bought the property as part of that? Okay.
Originally, this was Belmont where the triangle is. That was one. Bronco was here and Scott was here. So the idea was to buy Bronco, buy Belmonte out, got their property before we ever closed on the other property. Then we got these two properties. That means from here, where the driveway is going into this property I don't have, that we don't have, that's the only easement area. Everything else is now one owner.
Oh, and real quick, in terms of the Fisher property, there isn't a structure there? It's vacant land?
There is a single family, small, I think it's 1,200 square feet or something that's there. They've got natural gas off the road. Their, all their services come in on the other side of this main road. They come through the woods, too, but we're being eliminated off of all that.
Okay.
We'll be totally isolated under our own grid on gas, electric and cable.
I just want to find out, because there was a structure shown on this property and then over here, so I wasn't sure if there was one here.
Yeah, if you notice the blue building, that's, that's our building that's right on, right on the property line. That's one of the buildings that is a subject to this proceedings.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted you to see number 30, number 33, but before, we're going to do the before's first. This is what 30, it looked like beforehand. And if we can go now to after, now the other way.
That's 35.
Right.
I have to X out because it's going to not go in order.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
And there is, up there, as you can see, all we did is, I've said from day one with these permits, we put a roof on, we painted the side, cleaned it up, and that was all we did to the buildings, because there are things that have to be determined. So that's, that's one building. Number, if you go to number 35.
I was just going to put them.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So you'll see, nothing's changed. It's cleaner, it's painted, it's got a new roof, it's not leaking anymore, but nothing's changed.
Nobody's inhabiting it?
No, that's not, this is not one of the inhabited buildings right now, no.
Okay.
We, we did have a violation for cleaning the property up, but that's been pretty much done, except for several buildings that we haven't gotten to yet.
Has there been some tree removal?
Yeah, there had to be tree removal, cleanup, because that was all part of what the building department wanted, because in part, as these 13 permits applications that you have before you is about cleaning the property up and making the building secure. And that's exactly what we're focusing on. We're not focusing on anything beyond getting the buildings fixed and secured. I mean, again, this is part of Monroe's history. The pictures you saw of not Pam and I, but the other two pictures were people who actually stayed at the, at the campsite when they were kids and they contributed to pictures. And that's the type of information we've been getting back on feedback. And a lot of these pictures that I've given to you about historical pictures this board is in possession of is exactly from these people who gave me this information. This is what made Monroe's community back in the 30s, 40s and 50s, when people were coming up here just for weekends from the city. So we wanted to give a good idea. Here's the other one, 35. If you look at the roof, you'll see the roof lines, awful, terrible. They didn't do it, they didn't maintain the property. They couldn't even afford to put a roof on. They could have thrown a tarp over and it would have been, be better than it was. So you can see the difference. No graffiti to it, at least a half decent building. It's not done, it's empty again. But these were all done before the designation that I'm showing you today was everything that was done prior to the designation by Mr. Nelson on October 4th. And they were done by permits, by the way. All of these had permits taken out on them.
Is, are the doors the same or were the doors changed out a bit?
The door, the doors had to be changed out because of the condition of the doors. Ben wanted us to secure the building, so the doors have to be changed out. If windows are missing, they either have to be boarded up or changed out. Preferably, I'd rather just change the window out and secure it. It looks kind of ugly. You look like you're running, you know, you're running into a piece of the neighborhood you don't really want to be in when you look at a building like 35. So priority was to clean the buildings up.
So there's a decorative, it's, I don't know if that's painted above the, within the gable that's above the entrance?
Are you referring here?
Yeah.
That's a light fixture.
No, no, no. So if you look at the original.
On the before picture.
On the before picture?
Oh, here?
Yeah. Is, are those actual, was that painted on that those?
That was painted on.
Okay. So that's not actual wood trim that's there?
No, no, no. The purpose of what we did was just to clean the buildings up, clean up the paint, and that's it. You know, when you start renting out some of the year rounds that are there now, people drive in, they don't want to see they're walking into a place that looks like, like it originally looked. So that's the reason that we wanted to, even the subject properties that are before this board, numbers 37 and 39 are the ones that Sean, you had pointed out, where they were kind of falling down in the front. But if you look at the distant pictures, like you, when you were going around the S-turn, you looked at it at a distance, those two buildings beyond 33 were the ones that dilapidated in the front. Point being is that when you look at these buildings, three sides are no problem. The side, the one side is my problem. That's what these permits are there for.
35, is this one of the inhabited?
Huh?
This was inhabited in the before picture or it was not inhabited?
No. When we got there, the property, the owners all moved out, their kids were living there, they all moved out. These buildings were inhabited. Timeline, I can't tell you right now. I would check with somebody, some of the, like the realtor, Johnny C., who some of you may know. He, he's from Pyramid, he's well-known, but he, he was involved with these people for many years. But yeah, these, at some point, they were all inhabited. It's just a question of, of getting them fixed today. And then we've got 45. Let's see, before. That's what the roof looked like before, and that's an after. There you go. And again, permit was filed for. Ben did his normal inspection requirements, and this is what you're going to get. This is what you're going to get at, at Pinecrest right now. That's all you're going to get by approving these COA. That's what you're going to come back, and this is what you're going to see on each and every single building on this property. But this is just to show you what kind of work is done and how we're re-establishing these buildings. And then there's additional inside, I have some inside pictures. This was a nightmare, if you don't mind. Any questions? Yep. There's, there's my inside. Now, I just want to point out, if you don't mind for one second?
I'm trying to get to, um-
Oh, I want to just, just the before first, because I want to make some points. 45 before, yeah. If you see the dark area here? There, you see the dark area here? And the dark area in the lower? That's where the floor was so damaged that you couldn't even walk on the floor. So we have some after pictures. We hired Shane Florey. He came in, as he did with Rest Haven, and once he brings it up, voila, you'll see, we, I had people come in there and tell me to take the whole floor out. You didn't have to. We went and we cut out the brown, the black area and redid the floors.
Do you want rec hall repaired, repaired from door or?
Rec hall repairs, um, after. Nope, that's not it.
Indoor?
Yeah, those, that, that one, please. There you go. You see the stain difference? These are the two new sections, but it's the original floor. We sand it out. You saw all that grease and stuff in there. You noticed, I didn't get crazy, we didn't tear a floor out, we didn't touch it. Whether you see it on the inside or outside, you're going to get the same attention to these buildings. And this is why the COA is so important, and I don't disagree with wanting to monitor it. And the reality is, we are, that we and you are learning the first time. And what we do today is going to make a difference down the road, how everybody else is going to approach the situation. And if they see it's easy to work with the board and the board can easily work with the person, you're going to get a lot more people are going to want to do it. It's, they, they think of red tape as soon as they think of Planning Board or ZBA. I do. Ben?
So, so in terms of the windows, were these the original windows and then these were added?
Yes. They're the old metal windows, like the factory houses had, their fourth floor windows. Those are a problem because we're trying to figure out what to do, how to repair them, because you really can't get them anymore. And if you were to use the thing, it for something, then I got to talk to Ben about the, the, the energy codes become an issue. So I don't know.
Was this used for anything other than like a rec hall?
It was called the casino.
Building, yeah. That's the name they used to, so back in the day, casinos were not like gambling casinos. They were like rec halls.
Yes.
But no, I was just curious, because I see, I don't know if it was decorative, these hanging?
Yes, the decorative were there. I have no doubt that was there. I mean, it was a lot like Dirty Dancing and, you know, when you go in the dance hall, it's the same kind of concept.
Someone was just kind of hanging out there doing something artsy.
Listen, where else can you hang out in the, in the bottom of a hill and nobody knows you're even there? But you could see where the floors were fixed and where they were left. Eventually, they'll be stained and cleaned and whatever. You know, windows might be a problem trying to get that. But the reality is, part of restoring an old building, especially when you're an historical property, and I dealt with this more with Rest Haven than I do with this here, is that there's a key to it. And the key's very simple. At Rest Haven, when we were going for a license to try and be senior housing, the one thing I was told by shippo is if you could take it out, you need to be able to put it back in. I said, I have to put an elevator in from first, I want to take this one bathroom out. They said, as long as you can take it out and be able to put it in by leaving the pipes in the walls where they were, marking where the wall was, which is the end of our wall anyway with the thing, they said you're fine for doing it. So you need to know those things. So you need to know those things and have the documentation. And I can guarantee you, we've got probably ten thousand pictures of Rest Haven over the years. In, in seven years we've been there. And we're gonna do the same thing with this. But we just wanna be given the chance to get it there sooner than later, because I think it, it's really a good thing for the community. We used the Rec Hall Easter of this year. We did an Easter Bunny with, uh, Tom Beams, and the kids came there, did Easter hunts. We had Mr. Blue there, we had color painting there for the kids, just like in December, we'll do Santa Claus, and they'll come to Rest Haven. This is what makes your community. And, and a lot of the people that, I know one or two people actually that live around this house, this property, that actually went to summer camp there. You know, I know that a former, one of the, I think it was a village clerk, used to come up and go to Mountain Lodge before she moved here, when Mountain Lodge was somewhere where you wanted to be. So, I just want you to see that. Then you've got the, um, the rear outside after, um. And, and this is what we did, again. Uh, there is another picture of that somewhere in there, I can't remember which one it is. Um, but if you see, painting, all this is, is a primer base. Clean it up, make it look good, and then make a determination down the road what the colors are gonna be, because you, you gotta clean up first. You know, there's, there's enough work here to keep five crews busy for several months, just to get the place up and running and cleaned up the way it needs to be safely. Yep. Um. I think we may have gone through them. Oh, this other one, yeah, right there. I don't know if we went through that one, that, I have a different direction looking in after the cleanup.
I think I pulled them both.
Did you?
Yeah, they were both like colored, they've obviously colored.
Yeah, well, there's one from this door looking in. I thought I put it there, I can't remember which one it is. There it is. So, to give you an idea, that stage is still there, but the electrical panels here, there's the door. You can see the graffiti, you can see one of the doors that was left over. So all this is being cleaned, all this has been cleaned up. Floors have been repaired, you know, I, I don't need, um, I, I don't need, how do I say it? I, I don't need somebody come in and tell me to replace the whole floor, 'cause that's what they did. Oh, what's it gonna cost, twenty-five thousand? Yeah, but only, these are my bad areas. Structurally, the, it's a, I think it's a two, when I looked at it, I think it's a two-by-ten or two-by-twelve floor with joists underneath. And it, and it's got a middle foundation in the middle of it running also, because of the span. So, this is, so you see, you see what it's about, and this is what every building, I wish I could show you the inside of the rentals, but unfortunately, I can't because of the privacy of the tenants that are living there. But you're welcome to go onto zillow.com, and you'll see all the pictures. We do post the pictures of, of all the properties on, not only on Pinecrest, but all the other properties that we have, and you'll see the inside and the way everything is kept. So, just, just for your edification, so you understand what you're doing. This isn't rocket science, and, and no, by no means is this great work. We're just average people trying to do, you know, right, we know people need things. On this property, there's seven wells located, more than enough water on there. I think we're about fifty gallons per minute in to, in some, just on five units that are currently rented. Um, so we're well within the need of the property. Uh, my intent in the end, it, it, long-term, is to make the property totally self-sufficient. By having its own cable grid, by having its own electrical grid, 'cause we're gonna have four different transformers, but not in the air, everything's on ground. There is no aerial transformers, all will be gone. Everything is safe on the property, it keeps, same thing I did at Rest Haven. I literally immediately took it and put everything underground. I did it with my parents' house in Nantucket. I worry about older homes, especially if something pulls and hits it. They tend to be, um, bigger threats of, of problems, fires and stuff. So, so we did everything that had to be. It's got its own grid. Eventually, we, eventually, it's gonna have its own generators on the property. So the property is totally sufficient with its own water supply, it's electric, cable, gas, everything, and it doesn't rely on anybody but itself. And the community doesn't have to worry about it. It's not taxing the community at all.
Um, board members, do you?
What roughly is the size of the Rec Hall?
Three thousand, thirty-four square feet, roughly.
What, what are the, what are the interior dimensions of that big room?
That's what I understand it to be, that's why, I'm going off with the county records. We haven't actually done a physical.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, off the rec room, um, can you bring the one showing the stage in the distance? Because it's gonna make more sense.
With the pick, um.
Oh, you know what, yeah, it's number five. When, when you go through the list, it's, it's number five.
So.
Right here, uh, right there.
This one here, oh, yeah.
No, no, we're.
Right here.
Yeah, I recognize the circle. It's three dash three dash twelve.
But just in trying to gauge, I'm, I'm just trying to gauge the size of this hall. How many people would you estimate you had for that event you had back in Easter?
Not many, it was the first one done in the last minute, um, maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred people, but not at all, not all at once. I mean, with Santa Claus, we get three hundred people in a matter of three hours, four hours, but we're not landing the Easter Bunny by helicopter either.
I know they have sometimes the improvements in the size of the improvements, um, in the tax records, but of course, it doesn't wanna come up, so.
Well, can you go to the, can you go to the, the lookup, um, with the address? Or are you looking it up by the, um?
I think it takes me to the.
Okay.
But, um.
Usually, there's a screen beforehand where you can type in the, the, um, SPL. Your parcel information? I do this, and then over image? Not that I'm telling you, just how I'm gonna get in.
Okay, no, I know this is the other, I don't know if it ends up in the same place.
I think the site's just not working, I was trying to.
Oh, were you trying to do it here? Are you able to get on to enter image made online? 'Cause it's, it might be a county thing. 'Cause both of the portals are through the county.
Yeah, it's been down for a few days, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well.
All right, so we're not gonna be able to get that.
If you can bring that one picture up of the Rec Hall, to give you at least a description while you're here.
Um, inside or outside?
Uh, inside, please. Okay, uh, do we have one from the other's angle?
No, sorry.
Yes, directly behind the window in the back is a kitchen, two bathrooms. And it had to be cleaned out because obvious reasons. And it's caged, it's actually screened in, it's not windowed, it's screened in. Um, but, you know, the exception to the rule with historical homes is when you're dealing with energy codes and stuff, they're not so stringent on changing windows out as they are protecting the common areas, as for instance. And Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't the laws around adaptive reuse in the village similar to those that are in the town? 'Cause I know you were involved in that.
So, the village is adaptive reuse. I don't know that I worked on that one, but the town.
You were at a meeting, you were at a meeting.
Yeah, but the town I did work on, and that defines several uses that you can adaptively reuse it for if it's determined to be a store.
Right, and the point I'm trying to make is things like your kitchens and your bathrooms, unless there's something significant about it, it doesn't have to remain. Those can be modernized, it's more the common area. If I went into Rest Haven and tore up the floors and the wainscoting out, everybody'd have a heart attack. I'd have a heart attack. But those are the things that when we're doing this, and when you're judging what we're doing, the windows really don't become an issue, because Ben could say, I want new windows because of the energy code says it. They have look-alike windows that are double hung, like, um.
So Rest Haven is on the National Register, if I recall? Or National Register eligible? This one was recently locally designated, so, um, I think.
Well, the rules are the same, some, rules are pretty much similar unless local gives on the rules, but typically, you try to maintain with the Secretary of Interior's rules, which is what we're doing, so.
I do remember Village of Monroe's now. But a lot of it had to do with, you know, it was a reward that if you adaptively, if you protected the historic nature of the property, then you were rewarded with some additional uses that may not otherwise be allowed in the zoning district.
Which is the same, the town is in the same category, right.
So that's similar here, yeah, it's very, it's very common in zoning.
Right, so when we're, when we're looking at this picture, we're looking at it as a whole. So getting into windows is not a big issue. Colors of a roof isn't necessarily an issue, of, you have the original colors, but the type of roof is an issue. Rest Haven, I couldn't replace the roofs on Rest Haven cheaply, because on Rest Haven, if you look in the attic area where it's open, you'll see the metal going down underneath. You can literally see the rafter, and then you'll see the sheathing, the wood, the wood, the wood roof, um, the shingles, what's that name called? It's a white, it's a brown wood. Cedar shakes.
Cedar shakes.
You'll see the cedar shakes, and then on top of that is the metal roof.
It was originally.
Yes.
And put on top of it the metal.
Yeah, I think about nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, they put the metal roof up. So we knew we couldn't touch it. So what we did is we contracted with a local painter who came, put, found a material that would adhere to the metal, sprayed it with the material, which created a foam porous, and then we painted the, the color of the roof. This is the same exact thing that's going on here. No magic, no mystery. Luckily, we have pictures to say to you, this is what it looked like. And you're in possession of some of those pictures already that we have.
Is there anything?
No, I just wanted to make, well, the reason, I think I'm good. I just wanted to let the public know what was going on and what we were doing, and that when you see the word, or I know in, in the publication, when you put it out, you, they saw the word alterations. People think more than just what we're doing as an alteration. You know, replacing roof, fixing the siding, and painting it. Alterations in my land book would be is I'm making real changes to the building, which we're not doing, and they stay in the same footprint and everything. So I just wanted the board, I mean, the public to see firsthand, and for you to visit, since you weren't, didn't have the treat to getting there, to see really what you're dealing with, when, when you're doing. So I do appreciate the time of reiterating everything to you and letting the public hear firsthand as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so with that, um, do, we've opened the public hearing, or you want us to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we open the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Noreen?
Epple.
Aye.
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 Uh, so with that, is there anyone here present from the public that wants to speak to this application? There is. So, next question is, did we get GML back yet, or what was the timing of that? I, I don't know when we sent it out.
It'd be.
Right around now. Okay.
I have the computer.
I think you would've sent it to us if you had gotten it, that were to Ashley.
No, I definitely haven't heard from them.
Okay. So, at this point, we don't have GML, um, uh, which.
We take five minutes to meet with our attorney? Is that possible to do at this time?
Is that something you need to? Feel that it's appropriate?
Yeah.
Um, we're in the middle of a public hearing, should I adjourn the public hearing and then go into attorney-client?
Sorry, I meant to do it before we had that vote.
Oh, that's okay.
Record, you, or did receive shortly before this meeting, a comment letter from an attorney that is representing Mr. Scott Fisher. So Jonathan, I did email that to you, it came in at five-thirty, I sent it to you just now, once I had received it.
Okay, thank you.
So just wanna enter that in, you know, to the record, I think. We'll share it with the applicant, the applicant could, um, after they've had a chance to review it, if they think that it warrants a response, they could, they could respond to the board.
So, um, this did literally come before end of day for you, I think. And so the board members, I don't even know if they've seen this. So this is, I don't know if you've seen this letter or not.
No, I have not seen the letter.
Okay, so it looks, and literally, I haven't read it. Um, it looks like it came from Mr. Scott, someone, law firm representing Mr. Scott Fisher. Board should, recommendation from this property owner should. Um, and then he provides four reasons, failed to submit complete application, cannot continue the abandoned non-conforming use or otherwise proper permissible use of the structures, failed to follow the code, has resulted in damage to adjoining properties, Summer Crest has repeatedly violated the code. So it then gets into, and we won't take the time to get into all this, because I think frankly, the board, the attorneys, and yourself have to review this. Um, but I guess it goes through whatever the rationale is that they're submitting this under.
There's, obviously, as you don't know from me, I don't like leaving anything open. The damage to the property, um, he complied, I got a phone call from one of his tenants, and I asked his tenant to send me pictures, which I never received. The roadway we were working on that you saw going in, where the, where the front loader was, that's the road we're working on. If you look at the survey, and I'm sure Sean can, can prove it out, from that point to the property line, we're a hundred and twenty-five feet in the woods. So one, how he knows anything going on there is beyond me unless he's trespassing, 'cause there's signs up there that say, don't trespass. With that said, Ben comes in whenever he wants, he's been there a number of times. However, when he talks about damage to the neighboring property, and I think this should be addressed, um, is that, what he's talking about is when we had that five inches of rain in two hours, his house flooded, according to him. I asked him, send me pictures, he never sent me pictures. He complained to me about mail not being delivered when Orange and Rockham was at the end of the road, digging up the road to put the gas line in. So it was things beyond our ability. We're not even working in the area. And, and the road, and if you look at the lines, where the, where the utility lines are, they're all in the road. Why would we put them in the woods, other than go into the house? And that's what he's complaining about as far as the damage goes. I can't control Mother Nature. I've asked a local weather guy here, that we all, a lot of you probably know, and I won't mention his name, 'cause I might get in trouble. When's the last time we had five inches of rain in two hours? My Sergio property flooded out because the neighbors above on St. George hasn't been taking care of the road. We flooded out on the first floor of my, of my tenant's unit. We had water running all the way down the road, like it used to be before Roy, Rob, no, Roy from the Highway Department made them put drain lines in, because they weren't taking care. There, that wasn't necessarily their fault, but unfortunately unforeseen conditions. And when I asked that weather person that question, he couldn't even tell me the last time Monroe had five inches of rain in two hours. And if they had problems, they should've came to me. They told me, but nobody sent me pictures. So I can't fix something that I can't see either, and especially if we're a hundred and twenty-five feet away. And Sean, now I think about it, you were at the property, so you have a good idea where those trenches were.
I was not, but I represented.
Okay, whoever then went to the property would've seen where the trenches were, they were over a hundred and twenty-five feet away. And the reason I knew that, 'cause we had to put electrical cable in the ground, so we had to measure it. So that was just to the back of the building, another twenty feet for the front of the building. So you're a good hundred and fifty feet, so I feel bad what happened to them, but we all had the same problem that day. You know, even Lake Road flooded out, trees fell. It's just an unfortunate weather issue at that time. As far as everything else goes, I don't know how he knows anything, 'cause it's private property, and Ben has been there a few times. Ben hasn't cited us for any of the problems. I've been going over with him what's going on on the property, just to make sure we stay in compliance. So all permits, Ben will tell you, all permits have been filed for. And anything I showed you, the, all the new roofs, is all permits have been filed for, all of that.
So, I think we just wanna enter this into the record. We all have to read it, because we literally just received it. Um, you have a copy of it?
I just, I just sent it when it came in.
Okay. And then, so should we adjourn the meeting to the next, um, regular meeting at this point? And leave the public hearing open? Bless you. And then go into, or did you wanna?
Yeah, I was just, I'd like to request that the board close the public hearing tonight, given that you received one letter and no one from the public has appeared.
Up to the board, were you planning on keeping it open because you were waiting for county comments, or?
Yeah, that, because I don't know what they're gonna offer, primarily because of that, and we haven't really talked about this letter, but. But I don't, is there a timeframe within which we have to act if we close the public hearing?
I believe.
Maybe like 62 days or something?
Probably.
What does the board think about leaving the public hearing open or closed?
Being it open wouldn't prevent you from taking action at your next meeting.
So can we close it at the next meeting and take action if we wanted the same evening? So it doesn't prevent us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so we could leave it open. That doesn't mean we can't still take action. And then since there's an interpretation in, I don't know how that affects anything, or if that's just entirely separate from these proceedings.
Separate from.
Okay, so that doesn't affect it. So my thought would be to leave it open because we can still close it the same evening if we render a decision. Um, but board members, what are your thoughts?
Leave, leave it, leave it, leave it open.
Sorry.
Jeff?
I agree.
Pat?
Great.
Bob?
I agree.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn it to, should we do the next regular meeting then? Which is when we normally have our public hearings?
Octo. Seventeenth.
Um, so we'll adjourn it to October 17th at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter. Um, and this will be the public's notice of the continuation of the public hearing. Um, would someone make that motion?
I'm moved.
A second?
Second.
Bob, Noreen? Oh, it's Pat and Bob.
Aye.
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 Pat Chee.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so with that, I guess we will, that, that'll be it for this evening, for this application. And we are going to then go into a brief attorney-client? Is that what we do? Uh, do we have to resolve that?
No, we could just, we'll just take a pause. If you could ask, um, whoever's on the.
Jake.
Other end of this.
I can wait till after the, we're done tonight. If everybody could just stay, if that's okay. It's literally two minutes.
I'd rather actually just take care of it now. Let's just, since we're on this. So Jake, can you pause the recording for the time being? Okay, we're gonna briefly go into attorney-client and we'll be back. I'll let you know when we're back. Thank you. Uh, no, no, no. We're gonna go on to the next agenda item when we get back, so, thank you. Oh, do you want your, um. So I think what I'll do is I'll give it, I'll. I was gonna say, I will give it to Noreen if you want us to do that. You do have duplicates.
Of course, but I just have the thumb around to write it.
Yeah, but it'd be helpful if we could get it.
For the record.
Take your copy.
Like I'd like to like watch the video again.
Okay, it's on YouTube.
Oh, okay, that makes it easy too.
It's Pam talking. I had to give her a job.
All right, so I will give this to you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Jake, are you back? Are you there? Okay, thanks. Sorry for the delay.
News, I got my raise.
All right, uh, so next item on the agenda is returning projects, Monroe Commons. And did we get a whole bunch of review letters today?
Today?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Review letters?
Who did they come from? Did they come from you, Noreen?
They, Aaron sent, he sent, I turned it around to Senator.
All right, I just wanna.
Probably.
Oh, so you like, you did a whole bunch of emails.
Everything came to me. I actually called him looking for it.
All right, let me just save these here. Um. And does the applicant have them?
I had him put John in, Dan on, and I got this thing from.
We just got them this afternoon around 3:34.
Okay, just give me a minute to load them up, cause I just got them.
Can I have Aaron on too? And he'll be able to, I think, give you a summary.
Hold on, hold on a minute. All right, let me just make sure I get all these over here. Hear us, Aaron?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you hear, Aaron? Okay. All right, I think we're ready now.
Great. Should I start?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is Aaron Warner from AKR.
Recording in progress.
Um, so we've completed, along with the other consultants that have been reviewing this project, we've, we've, uh, completed our third round of the completeness for the preliminary draft environmental impact statement. Um, I think at this time, based on all the collective reviews that we've submitted today, again, apologize for them being submitted so late in the day. Um, there's a lot of coordination going on on that one. Um, I think we're ready to recommend the completeness determination, subject to some final editorial related comments that I think can be pretty quickly addressed by the applicant as they work on cleaning up their, their document and getting it ready for, uh, printing and posting. Um, I think it would be wise for them to take a look at each one of these memos. Um, Ashley and my memo in particular has highlighted areas of focus so that they don't have to scroll through the entire, you know, 20 plus pages to get, uh, to those latest editorial recommendations. Um, and if there's questions, they can reach out to us, uh, set up calls to, to get, make sure that they are addressing how we want them to address these things. Same goes for the other consultants. I think they're ready to, um, to meet if you wanna clear anything up with them on their respective reviews also. So I think, um, you know, that's the plan, that we would recommend it being complete, obviously subject to substantive review down the line on some of the analysis that has been provided. Um, we did draft a notice of completion. Ashley has coordinated on that with me. Um, but it won't be released until we, you know, have that confirmation that these final edits are good. And we have, you know, some concurrence and, and decision by the board on when you think a hearing might be held for this, so that we can line everything up appropriately.
Um, with that, Ashley, do you want to delve into this a little bit more?
Sure, so, um, as Aaron had mentioned, I think all of the consultants are recommending that you are able to find the DEIS adequate for public review, but there are subject, there are certain revisions. I know that I recommended, and Aaron as well, really editorial, just to provide more information before it's released, um, you know, clarifying some of the agency lists and, and things, things like that, that I think are spelled out pretty clearly. So we'd recommend that you make a motion to find the DEIS adequate for public review, subject to those revisions being made prior to filing and distributing the DEIS. And I guess we'd have to talk to the applicant as far as timeline, um, you know, how quickly they'd be able to turn around those edits, because there is a 14-day, um, public note, public hearing notice that you'll have to abide by. And also there's fif, the hearing has to be at least 15 days after the filing of the notice of completion, so.
So, um, before we start that, Sean, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
No, just that all my previous comments have been addressed for completeness. So I, I am also recommending that it be deemed complete.
So, um, I guess we're going to have a public hearing on this?
I would suggest that you have a public hearing on the DEIS and the site plan and special permit altogether as, as one.
So that would be at our next regular meeting?
If there's enough time to do it before then, um.
So, um, how extensive do you think the revision? So let me ask the applicant. So if we want to do this at our next regular meeting, that means all of the documents have to be just, they have to be edited to get to com, final, final completeness? They have to be distributed?
Yeah, that'll be the edits that'll be prior to filing and distributing the, the true DEIS.
And then, so our notice is going to be dated when we get the revised.
That's when it'll be filed, yes.
DEIS. I'm just trying to think of timeframes, cause then we.
Okay, I'm thinking that too. Um, I guess in addition, um, well, first, um, does your board have public hearings at its workshop meetings?
Um, I feel like that'd be too tight.
We, I mean, we've, we've had a very preliminary chance to review your comments. I think we believe it would take about a week for us to address them. Um, but then I know that, um, they need to be reviewed by, I guess we would ask, I don't know if there could be a point of contact for, for us so we could get this done. Um, would your board at this meeting be delegating or authorizing, I guess, one of the consultants to fill in the date for the public hearing on the notice of completion? Because, you know, I think October 17th is your next regular session is a little tight for us, just cause as Ashley pointed out, um, it's 14 days notice, but it's also 14 days, um, that it has to be published in the newspaper, which I know, I mean, I defer to Noreen how long that takes to get a notice published in the newspaper of general circulation is area. I know some areas that can take some time, depending on what newspaper, if there's an official newspaper. That's why I think it may.
Make, just make sure you're on the mic.
All right, I think it may be more, we'd have the public hearing at a workshop, um, if that's something your board.
Into November?
Yes, I don't, again, cause I think your next, as I understand it, your next workshop meeting is October 12th, which I think is, be virtually impossible, just looking at the dates. Cause again, if it takes us a week to do them, I'm assuming your consultants are gonna wanna at least two or three days. It's not a lot of comments, but just to review them and get comfortable with them. Then that would get us sorta to the end of September. So I'm not sure we'd have time to adequately notice. And we've put a lot of work into this. We don't wanna blow this on a notice issue.
So then, if that's the case, our November meetings would either be the ninth for the workshop or the 21st?
Yes.
Is it ninth and 21st?
Yeah, there's, this is one of those months where there is that extra week in between.
So, I mean, we normally have the public hearings on, um, the regular meeting. We don't typically do it at workshop. Correct.
Yes.
That's, that's been our policy. So, I mean, I think that the preference would be to keep with the way we always do it and have it at our regular meeting, which would be the 21st. Which would give us, honestly, I mean, I know it's another week out, but all, this whole document has to be now reviewed for substantive comments, so.
But we're not asking for.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying that gives the consultants additional time in the event that they wanted to raise anything substantively, you know, they could. But I don't know that it really affects the timeline that much to, to do the ninth versus the 21st in the grand scheme of things. So I would prefer that we keep it on the 21st, cause that's our regular meeting. Um, if we don't think we can make the October regular meeting, and October's again, I just don't know how tight it is.
I, I forgot the publication has to be 14 days prior, which you have to get it to the paper a few days.
October 3rd, so assuming you have, you basically have to be publishing it next Friday. Um, you know, or sending it to newspaper next Friday. And I think that would mean, you know, again, your consultants would have two days to deem it complete, which I think.
I, I would, if we don't think we can make it for the October regular, I'd say let's just do the November regular. Sorry, so if we can't do the October regular, I would say do the November regular. And then that gives us plenty of time to make sure all the notices, all the filings, you know, all the consultants have had the opportunity to look at the final, final edits and, and get it circulated to all the agencies, whatever those agencies are. So that would, that would be my recommendation.
And that would fit within the, you know, the required 60 days of, you know, that Seeker has for having a public hearing on a notice of completion, um, as well, so.
Okay.
But I agree also, it could also give us time to start the substantive review and we would have comments probably on or after that hearing within, if you're gonna set the public comment period for 10 days after, which is typically done. Um, you know, we could plan to have all our substantive review in line with public comment at the hearing.
And my point was just we're not losing time in terms of, once it's deemed complete, you start your substantive review. So, you know, even if it's a week out in terms of scope. The only thing that does is just, it's an extra week where you have to wait to see if there's any public comment. And frankly, so far, we haven't had very many people show up at all. So I think it's really coming down to the consultants. Um, board members, any thoughts? Let, let me step back. Um, so our consultants are recommending that we deem the document complete unless the board.
Adequate for, for public review.
For, right, complete for purposes, adequate for purposes of public review. Um, are you generally okay with that?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, so we will deem it complete for purposes of public review. Um, and so next is when we would hold our public hearing. Also, it's probably good to go to the regular meeting because it's not just on the EIS, but it's also on the site plan as well.
Site plan, special permit, and.
Special permit, yeah.
Don't remind me the locals, the local wetlands permit as well.
Wetlands too, so.
Yeah, so the, the hearings are a little more complic, um, the notices and everything else is a little more complicated because it's more than just one item that we're noticing. So, um, should we make first the motion to determine it?
Motion to determine the DEIS revised 83123 adequate for public review, subject to the revisions, um, subject to the revisions being made pursuant to your consultant comment memos prior to the distribution and filing of the DEIS.
Are we gonna do the establishment of the public hearing separately? Okay, so, uh, I will make the motion that we essentially, what Ashley has described to us, deem it complete for purposes of public review, circulate it to the various agencies, um.
Subject to the receipt of the revisions.
Of our consultants. May I have a second?
Second.
Noreen?
Emily.
Aye.
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 Okay, so now we're going to set the public hearing, uh, on the site plan, special use permit, wetland permit and DEIS for November 21st at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter?
Plan special.
Yes, and wetlands and EIS, DEIS. Um, at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter. May, I'll make the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Noreen?
Emily.
Aye.
Aye.
Bonnie Franzen.
Aye.
Pat Chee.
Aye.
Bob Garza.
Aye.
There's a couple of, um, comments. So who for purposes of resolving the editorial comments? should be our point of contact?
Aaron Burner and myself, if you want to send to both of us.
Okay, and if there are any questions, I guess we can contact-
Yeah, if there's any questions before-
It'd actually will be the point, and then we can loop in the other consultants as well, maybe even just one large meeting, just to get through everybody's issues, and then that, that would be most effective possibly.
Like a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, on a call, not in person. It could be on a Zoom meeting or Teams meeting.
Okay.
Um, who-
Site plan.
I usually do the public hearing notices, but I'll, was working with Aaron for the notice of completion, they'll be doing that.
Right.
And then Noreen will get you everything as far as the addresses and all of that that needs to go out for the mailings.
Are you going, so will the applicant do the circulation of the documents with an affidavit of mailing?
For the, the-
For the EIS?
For the EIS.
And, yeah, because that's going to be a pretty hefty, it's going to be both the site plan, or who would normally do-
I was wondering if maybe, you know, since the notice of completion will have a link to where the document can be found online, maybe they can just circulate the notice of completion with, as long as it has a link to get to the document, and we can keep a couple of documents at Town Hall hard copy, it's up to you, but I, I've seen it done both ways, where having it, the link on the notice of completion allows folks to access it digitally as well.
The other thing is that they could send thumb drives. We've had that done recently, so that-
Right, specifically for appendices.
Yeah, especially because of the appendices, so to serve-
We'll work on that, yeah, we'll coordinate with Ashley and Aaron on that.
Yeah, and then I think we should have a couple of hard copies.
Definitely you'll need, and I have a note to talk to Noreen, I don't know whether it would be, the notice of completion will identify where, you know, it would be available at Town Hall, I don't know if that would be in the building department, or if it's something that would be left, you know, perhaps up, up here, but we could work all that out.
Yeah, and then I think- Should one go in the Monroe library? Oftentimes it's in the library.
Oftentimes when you think there's going to be, I think the reg would speak to if you, if you think that it's warranted, if there's likely going to be a lot of interest.
I think, I think just the benefit of that is it's, it's accessible, so I would just put one in the library and then, um, one, so a hard copy in the library and then a hard copy here, wherever that, we'll figure out a place to put it. It'll just be at Town Hall and then, you know, we'll let the town clerk know. Okay?
In terms of E and B notice, I guess you're correct.
Yeah, we'll be doing that, or Aaron will be doing that.
Yeah, I can handle the E and B, again, it depends on when we, you know, determine everything's been addressed, and you're ready to go to print and everything, yeah.
Electronic version will be on the Town of Monroe website?
Yes, unless, well, it's another question I had to-
Do we have the bandwidth?
I don't know if we could do a direct link, so when I've been going on the website and trying to find, you know, the documents are there, if you click on planning board documents, and then all the projects are listed, I think it'd be good if we could have a direct link just to the, the, the EIS.
Hosting, and you host it?
Host it, sure.
That might be the easier way to do it, I just don't know how easily that could be done on the towns.
So what we'll do is, if you could host the EIS, then we can have a link from our planning board website to your site for the document and the appendices. Okay?
Work that out.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your attention, of course, making this great private act.
Have a good night.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Thanks, have a good night.
Jim.
All right, next item on the agenda is Golden Delight Bakery. There.
Says he needs-
Leepa needs two minutes for Golden Delight?
Only said he needed to.
Brief update, good evening, John Queenen with Lang and Tully for the applicant. It's a plan that's been kind of lightly kicking around before the board for the last, maybe year and a half.
More than that, but-
Well, as far as I've been involved, I'm happy to report that the reason that the major delay was, it was the last time, is there was lawsuits and evictions going on with internally in the building with regards to a tenant there, specifically the landscaping tenant. Those have all been resolved, the landscaping tenant has left the building, so now, we're basically able to proceed with a site plan without him being involved, takes off a lot of the special use permit and other requirements that would have been necessary for the site plan. So, we're back before you tonight, just to give you that update, that would be, we'll be coming back with a full site plan to address, you know, typical site plan issues, parking, landscaping, lighting, circulation, et cetera.
The use?
Well, the uses are listed on this, I did update the use table.
Okay.
They all appear to be permitted uses in the L I zone, so those aren't changing, there are two vacant spaces, we'll include those, but for right now, there's no, nobody in those two spaces. And we're going to proceed as forward to address Ben's concerns and violations with regard to having no site plan on the property, and I think some of the other violations have been cured with the removal of the landscape contractor, so that's where we're going to be going. The applicant is also currently pursuing sewer service to the property via connection possibly at Old Country Road, so that will also potentially change the complexion of the application.
Connecting to Monroe, um, Orange County Sewer District?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Sean, did you have comments?
So, I know we were talking about the uses, John did prepare that table, as he stated, on the front of the site plan. I just had a couple of questions with regards to the bakery, whether or not the retail use was associated with that bakery?
He does not sell, I don't think, at that location.
He does not sell at the location?
No.
Okay, and then, for the office furniture, same question about retail?
It's just the office space for the furniture, there's no, no retail sales.
Okay, and then, spaces five and six are noted as vacant, I just suggest that those include a use, so that you don't have to come back for site plan amendment to add uses to those spaces, so.
I see, well, I'll probably list them as office, because that's the more intense versus like a warehouse.
Sure, especially from a parking demand, sure.
Correct.
Yeah. Then I had a couple items on the plan, John spoke about sewer, and the applicant did note with regards to the water, that they do get potable water from the Village of Kerry's Joel, so I just asked that, that connection be shown, as well as the agreement with the village be reviewed by Ashley, I assume that's by outside user agreement, so. Sewer, if you could just locate any parking, existing parking for the site, and I have a copy for you when you're, yeah. And then there, we spoke about the existing western curb cut that's shared to, I think to the power lines to the north, just wondering if there was an easement, because a portion, portion of that curb cut is located on the adjacent parcel?
Part, part of the application, we'll get that relocated onto, onto ours.
Okay, okay. Couple minor things, oh, and then last time, the, the board had asked for a narrative, so if you could prepare that for the site. And then I'll have to go to county planning, because it's, excuse me, 17.
Ashley?
So you are still showing, I know the landscaping business is no longer proposed, but you still have that material storage yard? I know that was previously part of the landscaping, is that going to remain?
Oh, that'll be removed.
Okay, if you could note that on the plans, and I, I know you had noted, I think some of the sheds were being removed.
Correct.
Is that storage container also being removed?
Yes, all of the structures in the front are removed.
Okay. I know you identified the uses, and it's not clear to me whether anything was previously approved, or was the building previously approved, but just not the uses, do you know?
My knowledge, the, Ben has said that there was never a site plan approved for the property.
Okay, I'm trying to think, as far as Seeker and how to classify it, so if it's unapproved, you know, if the building wasn't approved, then you should be looking at it, you know, from that perspective, from, from Seeker, but we could talk more about that as you develop the, the plan. And I believe that-
Yeah, because is it site plan, but it's an existing building, so-
If the building was subject, I imagine it was approved at some point when it was constructed, even maybe without a site.
Well, it had to, it has a building permit, right? Does it have a building permit and a COO?
I'm sure it does.
So then it would be, you know, if it's just reuse of an existing structure, that's a legal structure, then-
It would've been that the structure was constructed, just without a site plan at the time, and I don't know.
Maybe Sean can follow up with Ben, ask what is on the file for this particular property?
I will.
Thank you.
I know that's really one of the, that's the main reason why we're back before you, is to get this legalized on the site plan, yeah.
I just don't know how to classify it from Seeker, because you are doing approvals, but it's a pre-existing building.
Yeah, so if it, my concern is that if it was not appro, you know, if it's an existing building that was put up without any type of approvals that should have been gotten at the time, then that would be different than if you're just reusing an existing-
Yeah.
-legal building.
We almost have to look at it as, okay, what are the impacts in general from the overall site, I guess, okay, we'll figure that out.
Also, just about GML, depending on the answer to that question, you do have that agreement I saw come through that the town has signed, so I don't know whether it would be-
That I signed?
I don't know whether it would be exempt under that, because I believe there's an exemption for reuse.
Buildings? When in doubt, we can always send it out, if we're not sure if it fits. Anything else? Board members? No, I, we really have to wait for the new application to come in, so, okay. All right, anything else? No, we're good?
No questions, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping it short. And-
To Walmart.
Are you, are you representing Walmart? Okay, Walmart, you know what I didn't, we didn't discuss, just as an aside from Monroe Commons, did we do GML, and should we do GML? We didn't really talk about that.
Monroe Commons?
Monroe Commons? Did we do GML review? That would've been like a long time ago. I would just suggest we send it out if we haven't. You, you can come on up, Walmart.
Yeah, you did, you did do it.
Okay, has it changed enough that we should recirculate?
I don't think it's changed from the-
The connection to the, to the, yeah.
I, I think we-
I guess you can, yeah, I guess you can actually.
Yeah, I would recirculate, even though Noreen shook her head.
It was back in 2020, so.
And we should do that sooner than later, although we have a little time, because of November. Okay, welcome.
My name's Matt DiSimone, you can just speak into the mic.
You have to speak into the mic, it has to show red, so that we know you're on the record.
My name's Matt DiSimone, I'm with Dewberry Engineers here on behalf of Walmart, specifically for 288 Larkin Drive.
So, like, what's that?
D E S I M. So, right, 88 Larkin Drive, I don't know if you have the actual PDF, so I brought this just in case, but Walmart is requesting to put 54 temporary storage trailers throughout their existing parking lot. The reason they need this is just for storage of material.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
They need this for seasonal storage, so it would be just through the months of October through January, they'd be placing these trailers throughout the existing parking lot, wouldn't be taking up any pervious area, they would be disturbing roughly about 60 parking spaces during this time, but after January, the trailers would be removed and would resume normal operations.
So, is this what you're showing on the backside?
Yes.
And those are impacting parking spaces?
So, so there's, some of them are impacting the parking spaces, obviously on the, on below there, where there's that, you know, truck route, there's no parking along there, but in the bottom right corner, on the right side of the plan, and then, actually, I believe that's it, those are the only parking spaces being disturbed, so.
Are a lot of them already there, or not?
You know, I drove through it this afternoon, and I-
Because it look, it looks like here, you have something going on, this looks like maybe that's side parking.
Correct, yeah, there, there's stuff there, I don't believe it's these specific trailers, but I, I do not know, but there's obviously some stuff there, you can see that clearly in the aerial there, yeah.
And the way you're showing this, you have a few that are longer in length, but there seem to be smaller, almost like box trucks, is, are those going to be smaller containers?
Correct, so four of the trailers will be larger, they'll be 40 feet long, and, and you can see them where they are right there, yep, and then 50 of them would be 20 feet long, eight feet wide, you know, roughly eight feet tall.
Okay, uh, looks like though they're backing up on a residential property over there, is that, is that Harriman?
It, it might just look that way with the trees in the aerial, but the intent is for them to all be within the limits of the parking lot.
And are these going to stay there the full time period for, or are they going to kind of be moved around, come and go? Like, how does this operate? What happens when suddenly you have this demand and need for these storage trailers? How do they arrive there? How long are they there? When do they leave?
I don't know if they're going to all arrive at once, or if it's going to be a little staggered, you know, I don't think October 1st, they would want to bring 54 on site, but I could definitely provide that information, but at most, they would be there till January, just because it's related to, you know, holiday season, extra storage type stuff, so.
Be gone before end of Jan-
Correct, correct.
Um, do you have anything else you want to present?
No, that's it.
All right, so, let's start with Sean.
First, so, my first real comment for the application was just to ask for a narrative, just to kind of describe those, that use, and I know you said it's a limited use, October through January, but is it going to be, continue every year, or is it just going to be for this year, or, you know, that, those sort of questions. Applicant provided a short EAF, part one, but it was handwritten, so, but if you could provide one, from the DEC's website, so it has the automatic answers completed.
Okay.
This is about the, of the, the Village of Harriman line actually runs through the building, and actually Bonnie just pulled it up there, so a port, some of the trailers may be impacted by that village line, and could be located within the village, and therefore, a separate application with the Village of Harriman might be warranted, as is currently proposed.
Looks like it's that line, and this isn't perfect, but if that line is generally in that area, you're proposing to use the full complement of the parking here, all of this area here, so it looks like you are extending into, you know, like this, this and, well, yeah, this and here, right, would be Harriman.
I'm just suggesting, or they'd be prepared, so that we can verify that the exact location of them, yeah, yeah. And then additionally, with the survey, it'll be able to tell us whether or not you comply with the required setbacks for accessory structures. With regards to the parking, since you are going to be taking up some of the parking spots, I had asked Noreen what, and I know she's working on potentially getting you the existing site plan, if there's existing parking will be impacted by the application.
Yep.
So, was part, again, this is always, was parking done for the entire business park, or in this instance, because I know some of the owners will have their own pads, and then, so I'm not sure how it was done for Walmart, and this is in Harriman partly, too.
I don't know how it's been done for Walmart, but I know in the past, for example, the Target application, I know that was looked at to see that part of the shopping center, all shares parking. all shares parking. I'm not sure about, about this section, but it would have to be, you know, if it's, whether it's site-specific just for Walmart, or it's overall for the whole area, it would have to be, there'd have to be excess parking.
Right.
And I recognize that this is in the back of the Walmart, but I just didn't, I know in the Target application, because that was a little bit more visible, that board had required some screening for those, so I'm not sure if, you know, the board wants to consider any required screening for any of the, um, containers. Um, in the back, uh, between the building and where the trailers are proposed, I just asked that the applicant confirm that the required fire apparatus, um, lane is met with the placement of those structures.
By it with a trailer there, so.
Okay.
I think you need to dimension it out.
Right.
Which you'll do with, when you do the survey.
When you do the survey, right. And a, again, with access, making sure that a tractor trailer can get access to those loading docks on that eastern side, uh, southeastern side, I guess it is.
Yeah, I mean, they.
Plus, um, it'll have to go to county planning because of the proximity to the Village of Harriman line.
Make sure those boxes are dimensioned correctly, hopefully they are. Typical, what's the typical length of the, um, the trailer on a tractor trailer?
Forty-eight to fifty-four.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three? So if it's 53, but you're talking about doing 40-foot trailers, but is it, is it really going to be 53, I think, you know, because, I mean, if you look at what's there now, it looks like they have 53 footers on it, not 40 footers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're different than that, I, 40 is what we were told, so, um, just gonna take it at that for now, I don't know if it's a different type of trailer, or something like that, I don't think it's the conventional ones that go on the back of a, you know.
You think it's more like those railroad-type storage containers?
I, I think so, yeah, but 40 is the dimension.
Yeah, just make sure, because when they're issued an approval.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna have to be 40, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if they're, in fact, trying to put down tractor trailer, then they should be showing the 53 footers. Was that it, Sean? Okay.
Yes.
Ashley?
A few additional, um, on the, your application form, you didn't have the correct SPL, so that should be 2-1-31.1, and also, the owner's endorsement needs to be signed by the owner LLC, or some, someone on behalf of the owner LLC, which is the FBG Wall LLC. If the person that signed it is a representative of that LLC, it should just be indicated on there, and then, I think you really need, you know, the, the site plan or survey, as Sean had, had mentioned, for Seeker, I believe it's likely gonna be unlisted, cause you'll be over the 4,000 square feet.
4,000 or? Forty thousand?
Or.
4,000.
4,000, right.
Okay, I thought you said 40. Okay, I could be hearing things. Was that it? Okay, so here are some images, so are these the typical storage containers, the smaller ones?
I believe so.
The 40 footers?
Right, it's taking up about parking spaces, so that's about 40 feet.
So, are, is this essentially approving what's already there, or this is, they wanna install even more than what is shown?
They wanna install even more.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, with that, um, let me start to my right, Mr. Bob.
I guess I wanna know is, if these exist there now, is, have they have permission to have those there now? They filed for those?
No, that's, they, this is, um, I had just pulled up, uh, it's a violation.
Right, that's from November, does it say 22, I think?
Yeah, almost a year ago, they were violated.
They were taken.
Hmm, no.
I, I don't believe they've been removed, or all of them have been removed, I'm not entirely sure, right?
Probably just a fee.
What was that?
I, they may be paying violation fees.
And these are, are going to hold goods that they wanna sell, right? Just to keep replenishing the shelves.
Correct, right.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Jeff?
I mean, I guess just as a comment, that, it seems like a temporary solution to a permanent problem, and, so I'd be curious, as part of the narrative, what Walmart might consider to rectify this situation going forward. I, I suspect that while it's a seasonal problem now, it won't necessarily remain that way.
Okay. I'm it.
I, I'll say I agree, uh, with Jeff, that those are there now, um, it seems, and so there must be a demand for them now, um, which is even before the season, and I don't know how many of them have been moved or relocated, or brought back onto the site, but at least you can see from this one, they already have them there, so, you know, I think it kinda begs the question, if you need more storage, should that storage be attached in a building, if this is gonna be a regular, um, part of their business, do they just need more storage area? Um, so that would be one of my reactions, um, the second is that I'd be, I really wanna know what the operations are, because, you know, while there's loading docks back in that area, I don't know what the movement, again, of those storage containers are, and what the impact may or may not be to those homes, because you're right up against that residential neighborhood, and so, if we're gonna have storage containers, I don't know that I would locate them where they're shown, you know, I might wanna see them more to the west, you know, maybe still behind the building, but pushing them, you know, I guess that's the toe of the slope, toe at the bottom of the slope, right, and then goes up to the other center, right? So I don't know how much room there is there, um, but at least you're up against a slope where there's, you know, nothing, there's not residential there, per se. Either that, or if you're gonna have storage containers there, then putting in something that's an actual noise barrier, depending on how long they're gonna be there, and if it's gonna be a regular thing to literally install a noise barrier. So, just some initial reactions, and then again, just be realistic on the size of these containers and what their real needs are, but, again, if this is something that's been ongoing, if they're still there, to me, it does beg the question, is there a little bit of an addition that needs to happen somewhere, um, in this, in this property? Which means more ratables, so. I don't know if we get ratables from storage containers, maybe we should, maybe there should be a fee.
The issue comes to, since Walmart went in approximately 15 years ago, the retail business has changed, all of retail business has changed. Walmart has been before us already to expand their facilities for curbside, uh, where we granted additional parking spaces for that, but we know concurrent to that, there was expansions, uh, interior to the building on, um, their facilities to manage that and, and store the orders. Many large retailers, Walmart included, are now doing fulfillment of online orders directly from stores, and a portion of the store's interior has been turned over to a shipping operation. Um, look, I work for BJ's, we're going through the same thing, and it's a matter of working with the space that you have, or saying the space no longer works the way it is, but that, that's what I, that's what I'm getting at with this temporary solution to a permanent problem. The reality is, over time, the amount of square footage that needs to be dedicated to retail floor space may be less, but we're not there yet either. But, I would ask that they consider that at this time. It's, this, this situation is not gonna get better, it will get worse before it gets better.
That's a great insight, that's exactly what's happening, um, in terms of like their mini fulfillment centers, so instead of dealing with Amazon, we're dealing with like a mini Walmart fulfillment center, um, where it's almost like if you go to the Amazon site, you can go to the Walmart site, and you can see all kinds of goods that they sell, and they will bring, so I think some of this storage is unrelated to the, you know, inventory that you typically have in the Walmart store, it probably has a lot to do with fulfillment, so I think to that end, with the narrative, it would be useful to understand what's going on operationally there, and, um, again, then to be able to, um, review this with that mind, and whether if this is a regular, you know, business operation, how much of it do we wanna see being in temporary structures outside and all around the building?
You may have gone over this, but, um, I may have missed it, what's being stored in the containers? Is it online orders? Is it seasonal products?
I understand it's just additional material, or products to be sold, just due to the holiday peak shopping and whatnot.
Okay, cause gotta be organized in a certain way, I mean, cause they're just containers, right, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, all right.
You're done, if I can.
Please.
Seasonal for them, a lot of what they do sell, I, I think we need to be concerned, as Sean put up, with the fire, the object of fire and rescue, we would need to know if they're planning on these temporary containers in the back of keeping any of their weaponry back there, and ammunition back there, because our fire department seriously need to know, should there be a fire back there, what they're coming back towards. I think our, always our primary concern for the entire town is safety, and we really need to know what's gonna be going on back there, and that our people that are gonna be responding to any emergencies back there, have that under control before they get there. I think we need certain assurances that nothing that could be of those objects will be stored anywhere but inside the store.
That's another great point.
For some reason, Christmas is great for guns, I don't, maybe people don't like Santa, I don't know.
Or Halloween.
Or Halloween, yeah.
So, um, I think with that, you have some direction from us, I don't think we're ready to really do much until we get a little more information, you know, in terms of referrals, we'll look at the GML, what we signed, and, but I think we need a lot more information and a, and a surveyed map, especially if it involves Harriman.
Got it, okay, yeah.
And then consider some of the comments we've, we've raised.
Yes, definitely.
And it might be useful to have a Walmart representative here.
Well, yeah, they would definitely know, uh, more about the, the specifics of what's being stored and everything like that, so, uh, no, definitely appreciate the comments and, uh, I'll relay the message.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need anything else from us, in terms of questions? You're good?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Some of these, uh, such, uh, questions also apply to Target.
And, yeah, I think all of the retailers up there.
Yeah.
And, and that's really what Jeff mentioned, it's just the way retail is being done now.
Target have containers in the back or something, or?
Yeah, we approve them, though, but not, I don't know to, they're not supposed to have to the extent, I don't know what they have now, we approve them in certain locations, I haven't driven around there to see if there's more than what we approved.
There's not more than what we approved.
But there's what we approved.
It's not quite where we approved it, but it's, but it's the amount that we approved, yes.
Okay.
So Bonnie, you think it's the online aspect, it's people ordering whatever they want from these businesses' websites, and them not having a place to store them?
I, I think it might be part of that, but I think Jeff especially could speak to that, because he's in the retail industry, and he, he knows that business, if he wants to.
Honestly, that's a hard question to answer, um, distribution networks in retail have changed quite a bit, um, I've been, well, let's see, I started working in retail 30 years ago, on and off, so I've got some insight into this, and I see it happening, obviously in my work at BJ's now, but it's hard to always understand the rationale of why, what the benefit is to retailers to ship merchandise for online orders out of stores, rather than out of distribution centers set up specifically for that, I suspect it's because it gives you the either-or option. It's, you can sell the item whether it goes out the front door or out the back door, and I suspect that that's a lot of why we're seeing what we're seeing now. Um, there's, there's just multiple ways that people can interact with a store now, as opposed to just showing up on, and walking in and, and going through the registers, and, and I think retailers are responding to that, and it's giving them life against Amazon in, in a whole new efficient way.
Yeah, they're providing the competition, the alternative, and, and so it is interesting, because either way, you know, if the argument's that it's seasonal goods being placed in, in the, um, trailers, that's because a portion of the building may now be dedicated to other purposes for fulfillment, so either way, I think what might be driving some of this is just simply the aspect of the addition of fulfillment going on, um, as an operation related to that particular building and use, so, yeah, so it'd just be, you know, good to understand what the need is, and then, um, again, from an impact perspective, um, my primary concern would be just Harriman and, and homes there, and, you know, whether there's a noise barrier, should there be a noise barrier, just protecting that area, are, you know, if you're gonna have more storage units back there, are you gonna want lighting, you know, I don't know what lighting's there now, but are you gonna need additional for the security, you know, aspect of it, so, um, maybe it demands a fenced area in, if you're gonna have that many trailers for storage for safety purposes, so I think all that needs to be considered, because this is something much greater and a lot more than what we reviewed for Target, for certain, so.
Curious, how many trailers did Target request?
Three.
Three.
So, in fact, one of them is right there, that's what this is, and then I think, were there another couple here, or were they in the back?
Well, what we approved was, so if you see where the one is.
Yep.
There was supposed to be one.
Right here, right?
No, right next to that.
Oh, right next to them parked in here.
And then those five or six spots facing the back entrance there, but where they are is there, where you're at, where you're at was, those five, six spots there and here.
And here?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not where they're supposed to be?
Not as I recall our approval.
Maybe we could check into that with Ben?
Unless, unless we made a late modification to the plan, I don't believe so, but I, what I suspect happened was, when they went to put them into place, that the two trailers in that angled spot were too close together.
Yeah.
To actually get in and out of.
Or they told us maybe they were gonna put a shorter trailer in, and they didn't, or, who knows, but something like that, cause I know, I think we talked about that, whether they could get them maneuvered in there.
Well, cause we, cause, because of the location, that we talked a lot about the screening and, and where their location was gonna be, and how it would be screened by what was existing there versus in other areas of the parking lot where that didn't exist, um, so we didn't wind up requesting additional screening, because they weren't gonna be effect, we did feel they were gonna be effectively screened by where they were proposed.
Right, but if they're in different locations, then maybe they're not.
Less, less so.
Okay, well, something to look into, so.
But perhaps they are where we approved, and it's just less so than I expected, so yeah, it's, might be worth checking into.
Okay, that's our eyes on the, eyes on the scene.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, with that, I will make a motion that we adjourn this meeting, we will.
I just have one question before we.
You really wanna do the minutes, don't you?
Yeah, right. Uh, so I was coming up Larkin Drive this afternoon.
Okay.
And, you know, the pack, Superior Packaging Building?
Yes.
It's, it appeared to me that they've already built that extension. I may be wrong, but it looks to me like there's a brand-new building there.
That would have required a building permit from the building inspector, because I don't think this has been.
In the town and the village.
Right, and I don't think it's been represented that this is already constructed.
Right, and I don't think it's been represented, that this is already constructed.
Yeah. Well, maybe I'm seeing things, but there is a, a large building on the back there, so...
Did they already go through one expansion? So this is what it's supposed to look like?
They just came before us, like two years ago, and haven't been back.
But, but this is what it is now.
I don't think so.
You think there's more here?
Yeah.
Well, we'll take a look. Okay. It's too late for Starbucks. Oh, no, maybe, no, it is, so, I'm going to go over there now, but, okay.
So just so you all know, Walmart's going to have two more applications coming before you.
Four?
Something with the outside sign and painting, and then something interior, and they're going to be... I don't know, this was, he came, this part, the trailers came before us months ago. Like, they started calling me almost a year ago.
Well, that's when the violation happened. I don't know what took them so long to get here.
Well, he sent an application four months ago, it was not even an application. He sent me two checks and some pictures, and I'm like, dude, where's all the paperwork?
Okay.
Oh, that's all I thought I had to do. I'm like, I sent you the whole application.
Okay.
Then there was another woman who wanted to do another part of project, and then there was another guy calling for another part, so then they were going to combine it into one project. And then he came back and said, not this guy, this other one I've been dealing with, Travis. No, we have to get these trailers done ASAP. So they sent more of the application and said, use the checks that you have, and I'm like, okay.
So, so let's, let's adjourn the meeting. I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
So adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, thank you Jake, you can turn us off now. Jake's off now.